Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:01 PM on Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. I'd like to welcome you all to Richland County Council's regular session. And this meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, take the roll, please.
Brenham.
Here.
Pugh.
Here.
McBride. Livingston.
Here.
Teresa.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mackey. English.
Present.
Newton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Mackey is... Next item on the agenda is the invocation that will be given by the Honorable Don Weaver. Councilman Weaver, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Gracious Savior, this week we begin the journey of Advent. This is a season of expectation and anticipation, a time of preparation and confession. Heavenly Father, your Son Jesus is your greatest gift to us, a great sign of love. Guide us as we strive to walk in that love together as a council and a community this Advent season. As we prepare our hearts for Christmas, send your Holy Spirit to be among us and bring us closer as a community and closer to you. Be with our military and their families as they serve in harm's way to defend our nation. Be with our valued employees as they serve the citizens of Richland County. And give us the grace and strength we need and help us to always trust in you. We ask that you come and dispel the darkness of our world with the light of your love. Amen.
Amen.
... back of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Weaver, for those moving words. Next item on the agenda is item four, so approval of the minutes. Any changes, additions, or deletions to the minutes from the special call meeting for November 14th, 2023?
Move to approve.
Okay, move to properly second. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 4B, approval of the minutes from the zoning public hearing from November 16th, 2023. Any changes, additions, or deletions? Entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Chair.
Second. Move to properly second. Any discussion? All right. There being none, Madam Clerk.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride. Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item on the agenda is item five, adoption of the agenda. Any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda? There being none, entertain a motion, okay?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Second.
Move to properly second. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk.
Pugh.
Yes.
Brenham.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item six, report of the attorney for, county attorney rather, for executive session items. My deputy county attorney is present this evening in lieu of our county attorney. So, Ms. McLean, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman Walker. There are four items on the agenda this evening for executive session. Items for A, Alvinus Glen Detention Center update, and for B, finding that the Richland election in Riverbanks Parks District may issue not exceeding $80 million principal amount general obligation bonds to authorize the Richland election in Riverbanks Parks District to issue such bonds and to provide for the publication of notice of said finding and authorization. If the council so chooses, both of those items are appropriate for executive session under Section 30-4-70-A2 of the South Carolina Code of laws. Item 6C, 2023-24 County Administrator Evaluation, and D, 2023-24 County Attorney and Clerk to Council Performance Evaluation Process are both appropriate for executive session under 30-4-70-A1. In addition, item 6B has outside counsel present.
Given that item 6B has outside counsel, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Move, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Move to properly second. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
And executive session. Entertain a motion to come out of executive session?
So. Move, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Move to properly second. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride. Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Record reflect that council executive session with respect to item 6B on the agenda pursuant to South Carolina Code, Section 30-4-70-A2, we received legal advice and information and no action was taken. Next item on the agenda is item seven, citizens input. This is for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair.
Next item on the agenda is item eight, citizens input. Must pertain to Richland County matters not on the agenda. Items for which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled cannot be addressed at this time. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This evening, we have four individuals that have signed up to speak. When I call your name, I ask that you come forward to either mic at the front. If you would, state your first and last name as well as your address, and you'll be given two minutes to speak. You'll hear a timer that indicates your two minutes. At that time, we ask that you please conclude your remarks. First is Bill Malinowski and Mike Sloan.
Fewer steps that way. Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Honorable Members of Council, my name is Bill Malinowski, 11824, Broad River Road, Chapean, South Carolina, 29036. In an apparent effort to absolve himself from the inefficiency I referred to when I spoke at the November 7th, 2023 meeting, your attorney proved my statement correct as seen in your minutes of the same date on page five where it is written, and I quote, "Mr. Wright indicated the motions by the former council member were received after their term expired. Current council members made those motions and they were either sent to committee or disposed of by council action." End of quote. Well, that is a totally false statement as what I started my public comment with was in April 2022, motions were made and went on from there. So how were those motions made after my term expired in December when they were made in April? Such lack of attention to detail makes me wonder what else the attorney has provided you incorrect information on. Not only should the attorney apologize for this glaring error, your minutes should be corrected and the matter noted at performance evaluation time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Sloan.
I'm Mike Sloan. I was out at 1431 Wonder Drive to follow up with comments of Councilman Malinowski. You know, we just wonder if you're listening. We put these things out there to you and we don't just say, okay, here's something that you may want to go. This is speculation. This is not speculation. This is giving you fact of the dates of these, when they actually occurred, and what needs to be acted upon. Our citizens in Richland County, I talked to several already about this, and I'm speaking on their behalf as well. They're wondering sometimes if you're listening. Please listen because they elected you to represent them. And they're not being represented when something is swept away. That's not the way we do business in Richland County. I don't think that. I don't think there's a councilman up there that does that. I really don't. But I do think we have not done our due diligence on this at all. And I would strongly urge the chair as well as the rest to review this matter and let's get down to the bottom of it, okay? And I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of people in Richland County. We just want the best. We love you. We're just going to support you. But how about supporting us too, okay? It's a two-way street here. Thank you.
Thank you. The next individual, Jeremy Wilson, you signed up. Your subject matter says the zoo, and I want you to know that item is on a separate public hearing, so I will save and call your name at that time. You're welcome. Cynthia Spencer.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Spencer. I live at 1813 Penfield Drive. A year ago, I came here and asked the council for help because I was having problems. I addressed these problems with Richland County, and I'm still having a problem. So I went to the ombudsman. They told me they forwarded it to the sheriff's department. I filled out, I went online, and I requested to speak with the sheriff, and I got nothing. I went to professional standards. I got nothing, and my problem still persists. I feel unsafe in my neighborhood, and I really don't know what to do now. So I just don't know what to do because I understand that they're busy, but it's been a year and no one's that busy. that busy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak this evening.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Next item on the agenda is item nine, report to the county administrator. Mr. Brown, you recognize, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. Under updates for consideration, the only thing I will point out is recently, staff sent out information about the opening of two grants that Richland County Council makes available in the form of hospitality tax and accommodation tax. So that process is open now and concludes at February. So I just want to take this opportunity for those citizens who may not watch the committee but watch council meetings, just to be aware that that process is open. Mr. Chair, moving on to items under the administrator's nomination, we have two items. One item is a ministerial process, but it does require council consideration. The Columbia Housing Authority, as nobody in your packet, has made a request of Richland County, and in their request, they are asking you to approve a resolution regarding the proposed issuance of housing revenue bonds for the Brookfield Point Affordable Housing Development. In your packet, I believe, beginning on page nineteen, there is a letter as a part of the briefing document that communicates some specifics. And so I just point out these just for the purpose of a quick understanding. This is a project that was approved back in October of twenty twenty-one. According to the first paragraph in the memo, working with SC Housing, the project has now received an increased allocation of tax credits that will support completion of the project due to the increased cost. The bond amount was increased from ten million to twelve point five million, which makes them have to ask you for this request. This does not fiscally affect the county's funds. It is not an approval that will cost the county any dollars, but it is a process that has to be approved by the jurisdiction in which this project takes place, and thus, if it be the council's will, staff certainly supports the approval of the requested resolution from Columbia Housing.
Motion with respect to item nine, be one.
So moved. Second.
Moved to properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a nun. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tereshia.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
And a motion for reconsideration?
So.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second. It's moved to properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a nun, Madam Clerk?
Brenham.
No.
Pugh.
No.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
No.
Tereshia.
No.
Weaver.
No.
Baron.
No.
Walker.
No.
Mackey. English.
No.
Newton.
No.
Motion fails.
Brown, you reckon?
Mr. Chair, the next and final item, I'll read staff's recommendation, but it is a continuation of the entire process that we've gone through related to the Family Services Center. Staff recommends approval of a contract to MBCom Construction Company to provide the design build services to construct the new Richland County Family Services Center in a former dealer's location at the Columbia Place Mall with an estimated overall project budget of forty-seven million. And Mr. Chair, staff does recommend approval of this item. There are certainly more details in the packet, but this is an item that we have talked about in committee, in council, and again, this is just us getting to the point now where we're ready to move forward with the award of a contract.
And a motion with respect to item nine, be two.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second.
Properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a nun. Madam Clerk?
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tereshia.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
And a motion for reconsideration?
Move for reconsideration.
Second.
It's moved to properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a nun, Madam Clerk?
Brenham.
No.
Pugh.
No.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
No.
Tereshia.
No.
Weaver.
No.
Baron.
No.
Walker.
No.
Mackey. English.
No.
Newton.
No.
Motion fails.
Next, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is item ten, report of the clerk of council. Madam Clerk, you are recognized.
Thank you, Chairman Walker. Just a reminder to mark your calendars, we have the Strategic Planning Forum scheduled for January twenty-fifth to the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, and also remind the public that we have a special call meeting on December the twelfth and on December the fourteenth, instead of the third week of December. That concludes my report.
Questions or comments for the... Next item on the agenda, item eleven, report of the chair. It's time the chair does not have any updates or announcements for the body. Next item on the agenda is item twelve, is our open-close public hearings, and first item on the agenda, well, with respect to public hearings rather, is item twelve A, finding that Richland, that the Richland-Lexington Riverbanks Parks District may issue not exceeding eighty thousand, eighty million, rather, dollars in principal amount, general obligation bonds to authorize the Richland-Lexington Riverbanks Parks District to issue such bonds and to provide for the publication of notice of the said finding and authorization. And Madam Vice Chair, before I open up that public hearing, how many people do we have signed up?
We have seventeen total.
Total, so we have, what is it, two minutes per person?
Sir.
Would that require for us to suspend the rules this evening?
If everyone used their full two minutes, yes, assuming yes.
I'd like to move that we suspend the rules, allow everyone to speak, provided we need a good time at the end.
Second.
Properly second. Any discussion? None. Madam Clerk?
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tereshia.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Public hearing is not open, Madam.
Thank you. I will call two names, if you would. Just come to alternate mics. Same rules apply as earlier. Please state your first and last name as well as your address. You'll be given two minutes to speak. When you hear your ringer, that'll be the conclusion of your two minutes. We ask that you end your comments at that time. Please refrain from negatively talking about any members of county employees during your remarks. Jeremy Wilson, Bill Malinowski.
I'm Jeremy Wilson. My office is at fifteen forty-five Sumter Street. I think getting your name in the wrong place sometimes has some advantages. I've been associated or no, attended the zoo for years and years along with my children. The benefit to the county, both Richland and Lexington, I think is amazing, the number of people that are employed, the people that come from out of town, and I'd like for all of you to consider the funding that's been asked for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Honorable Members of Council. Once again, it's Bill Malinowski, one one eight two four, Broad River Road, Chapin, South Carolina. I also am a big supporter of the zoo, continue to like to see it continue to grow and expand, as do most other folks that are here today. The same request was before this council body not that long ago for the same amount of money. I'm sorry to see that they're not willing to negotiate it appears, because they're back with the same dollar amount and not something lesser to maybe work on it piece by piece. The council voted no the last time due to the economic times that we were in, and right now, the tax increase of eight dollars, sixteen dollars, or whatever amount it is, I'm sure I can afford it. Most everyone that's here can afford that, but what about the less fortunate, since the statistics out there say that over sixty percent of the families out there today are living paycheck to paycheck. Even that small amount of money that we think is very minute can have a negative effect on those families in paying bills and buying groceries, and any additional monetary amount would have that negative effect on those people, and we have no idea what the economic future holds right now, just like the last time. Most costs have gone up, and we don't know when and if they will ever come down. So I ask for the sake of those who are least among us, that you deny this request until times change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Cardwell, Hal Stevenson.
Go ahead, Anna.
Oh, gosh. Hi, my name is Hannah Cardwell. My address is thirteen eleven Pine Street. Good evening. My name is Hannah Cardwell, and I am a teacher in Richland County. I am a special education teacher, specifically teaching sixth through eighth graders with mild intellectual disabilities. Previously, I taught elementary school, also students with mild intellectual disabilities. I have been involved with Riverbanks since I was in high school. I began my time at Riverbanks working in retail and concessions. I then had the opportunity to become a summer camp counselor. I was a camp counselor at Riverbanks for four years. Throughout my time there, I got to connect some of my favorite things, teaching, conservation, and disabilities. I have made lasting connections because of the zoo. Working as a counselor with a background in special education, I have a spidey sense when it comes to kids with exceptional needs. The expansion project for the zoo will bring some needed ADA adjustments, which makes Riverbanks more inclusive for all. I may be biased, but there are some exceptional campers, and they're the best they are. I'm lucky enough to still be in contact with these campers, as they have aged, with a love of conservation, animals, and Riverbanks as a whole. Riverbanks is a spotlight for the whole state. Many campers come from all over the state for the experience that Riverbanks provides. The expansion project will only bring in more campers and guests for an even better experience. Riverbanks holds a very special place in my heart, as is the case for many of us here tonight. I'd urge you to consider the funding for expanding Riverbanks to make it magical and inclusive for all for years to come. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, my name is Hal Stevenson. I reside at fifteen eleven Haygood Avenue, two nine two zero five. I rise in support of the zoo. I have served on the city's accommodations tax committee now for a number of years, and while we don't fund them directly, I've become very familiar with the work of both the experienced Columbia group, who is working with all the tourism groups, and dug down deep and understand just how valuable this asset is to our community. I am not typically for raising taxes, but I believe in this case, there's been a lot of guardrails around this. Lexington County has to approve it as well, so I think we're in good stead to approve this, and all of us coming together, I think, as our illustrious councilman prayed earlier, that we learn to work everybody together in this community, and we'll come out a lot better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deonka Schuler and Bob Davidson.
Good evening. Deonka Schuler, two zero four Upland Trail Road, Elgin, South Carolina, two nine oh four oh five. I'm coming before you this evening, speaking as a current board member of the zoo, as a parent, and as a citizen of Richland County. I can tell you one thing. My first, born and raised in Ohio, my first trip ever to South Carolina, the first tourist attraction my boyfriend, now husband, took me to was the Riverbanks Zoo. That was thirteen years ago. The zoo holds a special place in our hearts for our children. Our children love that zoo. They are zoo campers. Our daughter has aspirations to be a zoo veterinarian one day, and this is the zoo that can teach her what she wants to do and aspire for. Please consider this. Our children love the zoo. Richland County, the kids in that district, go to the zoo every school year for a field trip. That is their favorite field trip. Please consider this. You do not know what these children, citizens, the community, put into this zoo. We love it. Please support it.
I'm Bob Davidson, sixteen fifty Milford Road, Columbia, two nine two oh six. As a council-appointed member of Riverbanks Park Commission and a resident of Richland County, I'm honored to advocate for this project that will positively impact the lives of every citizen in our community. A few months ago, I was at Riverbanks for a meeting. In the parking lot, I saw lots of license plates, Pennsylvania, Ohio, Texas, even Oregon, and fifty-six school buses from Lexington and Richland County, fifty-six school buses. That's at least two thousand children and countless tourists. They were there to enrich their education, seeing the animals and enjoying the climbing tower, navigating the rope scores, riding the carousel, and playing at Waterfall Junction. We all love our children and our grands. We have before us a way for them to benefit even more by expanding Riverbanks. You can help them by providing new experiences and new winding trail across the river to the gardens that lets them visit indigenous animals that they've heard about but probably have not seen up close, bears, wolves, eagles, owls. An opportunity to travel to the gardens by air should excite them, too. You can help the Midlands children continue to benefit from a zoo experience, one that is ever-challenging, ever-changing, and one that is not too crowded for little people to enjoy. Let's do it for the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Clay Sharp, Jason Snyder.
Good evening. Chairman Walker, members of the county council, thank you very much for your time this evening and your service to the county. My name's Clay Sharp, twenty-one twenty-two South Beltline Boulevard. I'm the Executive Vice President at Boyer Commercial Construction. We currently have forty employees, of which approximately half are Richland County residents. We had the pleasure of constructing the last major construction project at Riverbanks Zoo, the Aquarium and Reptile Complex that opened to rave reviews earlier this spring. Throughout the duration of that project, there were over two hundred construction workers on site. We are currently under construction on another two point one million-dollar project at Riverbanks Zoo, and on that project, through some quick math today, I believe there will be over seventy-five construction workers on site. Both of these projects were awarded as part of a competitive bid process, but I share these metrics to highlight the fact that construction dollars that are spent at Riverbanks Zoo are going to flow right back into the local economy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Jason Snyder. I live at twenty-eight thirty Step Drive here in Columbia. I've been a Richland County homeowner and taxpayer for, since nineteen ninety-nine, the majority of my life. My first visit to Riverbanks Zoo was in the mid-eighties, a while ago. I've been a member since two thousand and five. Riverbanks Zoo is one of the few entities, if any, if the only one in metro Columbia area that separates us from cities like Greenville and Charleston. Simply put, all of the accolades that those cities get that we all hear about, and all the things they so-called "do better than Columbia," do not really have or hold anything that is close to Riverbanks Zoo. As a father of a special needs child, who ironically is referred to often as the mayor of Camp Sunshine, if you're familiar with Richland County's special needs camp, I can say with one thousand percent certainty that neither of those cities have anything that is so accommodating to special needs families like Riverbanks Zoo. I know from firsthand experience that the, one of the key factors they address right off the bat in any new change or expansion or improvement to the facility is accessibility, which as someone who has taken their child around the state is difficult. Over the past four years, I've had the pleasure to build and run Peak Drift Brewing Company on North Main. As we planned our introduction into the market and the city, philanthropy was very important to all of us there. So we, the first entity I thought of to support with our philanthropy was Riverbanks Zoo. It is hands down one of the most diverse places you can go in all of Columbia. You will see every age, race, gender, and economic background there, and is why we've partnered long-term with Riverbanks Zoo, because they truly do service the community. I don't necessarily enjoy any tax increase like pretty much ninety-nine percent of the people will do, but sometimes we have to look at what's best for the whole and sacrifice those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Queen and John Lumpkin.
Good evening. I'm Samantha Queen. My address is two oh six Woodrow Street, two nine two oh five. I serve as the Director of Corporate Communications for the South Carolina Department of Parks Recreation and Tourism. As a Richland County resident and zoo member, I'm honored to speak on behalf of my agency tonight to underscore the significant impact Riverbanks Zoo has on the Midlands and the state as a whole, and the greater impact that is possible with their Bridge to the Wild Plan. The South Carolina Department of Parks Recreation and Tourism is a cabinet agency responsible for managing South Carolina state parks and marketing the state as a preferred vacation destination on the national and international levels. As the most visited zoo in the southeast, Riverbanks is certainly an incredible tourism asset to our region and the state as a whole. It's what we call a... It's what we call a legacy attraction, because it's been a landmark destination since it opened in the '70s. What's special about Riverbanks, other than the beautiful scenery, commitment to education and conservation, and outstanding recreational activities it offers, is that it continually reimagines visitor experience. Riverbanks actively seeks to responsibly reinvest in their product, to respond to changing consumer demand, and create first-class visitor experiences for current and future generations. And while the updates and enhancements improve our quality of life and livability in the region, they also help attract hundreds of thousands of visitors from 50 or more miles away every year. Those visitors, whether they come for a day trip or a weekend, spend dollars all over our community, from restaurants and hotels to retailers and gas stations. As a whole, the tourism industry is critically important to the state of South Carolina, generating an estimated economic impact of $29 billion annually and growing. And while the tourism industry benefits tremendously from our natural assets like our beaches and mountains, our lakes and our rivers, it also relies heavily on the creativity, investment, commitment of communities around the state who build and maintain our top attractions. To keep visitors coming year after year, we have to keep innovating, because our out-of-state competitors always are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen of Richland County Council, my name is John Lumpkin. I reside at 490 Alexander Circle in Richland County. I'm a product of Richland County. I'm a product of Richland County School District 1. I've lived here most of my life. I'm here on behalf of James Bennett. James Bennett is a senior executive of a large financial institution in Columbia, had an unavoidable conflict. He's in Washington, DC for two days, and he asked me to appear here on his behalf and on behalf of a group there called the Midlands Business Leadership Group. We've been around for some 20-plus years. There are 60-plus of us: business owners, community leaders, and civic leaders, and and we're dedicated to improving the quality of life of all citizens in our Midlands, particularly Richland County, and improving the economic welfare of all citizens. Our group met back in May, early, late April of 2023, and we discussed the zoo ourselves as businesspeople. We looked at this project. We've loved the zoo, but we looked at this project as businesspeople. We made a unanimous decision to come forward, write a letter to council, and I have copies of that letter that we wrote, and Mr. Brown, very capable county administrator, this is the copy, just handed you a copy. We assume that each of you have received it. You might just pass. Pass. You have those? All right, you've got those then. And we urge you for both a quality of life, but also economic development. Can you settle this? Think about 27 miles, Mr. Brown, from the Congaree National Park to the Lake Murray Dam. In three, two, three to five years, we'll have that an intact, fully mobile, ADA-compliant path and bike path. And the centerpiece of this project is the Riverbanks Zoo. So, we are here to urge you, respectfully, to stay the course and vote.
Respectfully, that is your time. Thank you. Tristan, and I apologize, I can't see the last name, Tristan. And Tracy Broom.
Tristan Winkle, 512 Congaree Ave., just down the street where I live with my wife and two daughters. I am the Society Board President, and I know you've heard a lot about the macro and meta-level sort of impacts that the zoo has in terms of economic development and tourism and employment and education, but I wanted to just give the view from the small-business owner's perspective. I moved here in 2003. I'm a veterinarian. Specifically, I'm a veterinary specialist, which essentially means if your vet can't figure it out, if it's a challenging situation, they send it to us. The problem with veterinary specialists is there's very few of us in this world. And so, when I try to hire somebody, there's maybe only a handful of people in the country that can fill that position, and they're looking at jobs anywhere from San Diego to Charleston. And so, every single individual that we hired, when I came here, there were seven of us in the business, including myself. We grew that practice over 15 years to 100-plus employees and 20 doctors making six-figure-plus salaries. So, all of those people earning income, paying taxes, raising families, going to school, many of those people are still in the practice. Many have opened their own businesses and expanded the economy of the area. But every single one of those people was brought to the zoo during their interview process, because it's a direct reflection of the quality of life that we have here and the importance that this council and the members of our communities place on our own quality of life. And so, as the small-business owner, it's absolutely essential that we support the zoo to help continue economic development in the area, support jobs, and support growth of our economy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Tracy Broom. I reside at 806 Naples Avenue in Casey, South Carolina, and I co-own a business here in Richland County, a marketing agency called Flock and Rally, at a building I co-own with Debbie Shadle at 1817 Gaston Street, Columbia, South Carolina, 29201. I am here to support Riverbank Zoo. We do the advertising for Riverbanks and a lot of other major tourism entities. We also do a lot of economic development work. My job has been to understand the intersection between tourism, economic development, and the overall economic prosperity of our region. First, Bridge to the Wild is going to transform Riverbanks from a one-day visit and one-day's worth, one-day's worth of investment by visitors into a two-day visit. That magnifies the economic impact so hugely, and it just means a huge increase in visitor revenue across the region. There's another reason I support this. We need more tax revenue to support everything that needs to happen in Richland County. Riverbank Zoo and Garden, it's a powerful economic engine, but it's not just in the direct sense. It is the state's number-one gated attraction, right? I know homeowners are affected by this small tax increase, but property values go up in regions that can compete at a high level for that visitor revenue. We're competing against other southeastern city regions, and those site selectors, they're not just looking at the numbers and the water and sewer infrastructure. They want somewhere where their executives, their talent feels good about living. They want quality of life, and they demand it. And that can be the tipping point between Columbia getting a facility and somewhere else in the southeast or elsewhere getting a facility. While that's not a driving concern for most folks, I get that.
At your time.
It is for us. Make the investment. Thank you.
Next, Derek Williams and Holly Grover.
Proceed. Good evening. My name is Holly Grover. I live at 3635 Fox Hall Road, Columbia, South Carolina, 29204. My son, Ryon, attends Riverbanks Nature Preschool. He spends mornings outside in the woods, where he feels the weather and the fresh air and the changing seasons. He learns via a nature-centered curriculum that includes planting and harvest in Miss Amanda's garden. He examines the tiniest bugs and imagines the biggest planets. Nature Preschool has prepared Ryon for so much more than kindergarten next year. It has shaped the way that he exists in curiosity and connection with the world. Here is one story that illustrates what I mean. Ryon and I were on a neighborhood walk when we spotted a dead squirrel in the road that was covered in flies.
And the flies were eating the squirrel.
It's true. He told me that the flies were taking teeny-tiny pieces of dead squirrel and recycling them from squirrel into fly. They and other things would recycle the squirrel, and by doing so bit by bit, they would move the squirrel out of the road. Every little piece of it would go into the environment and support the life of other things. He said that usually squirrels can avoid cars, and how sad that this one couldn't. He even saw that we were no different from the squirrel. Whenever a car passed, he would grab my arm and take me to the side of the road so that we wouldn't end up like that squirrel. After a long time, he declared, "It's a bad day to be a squirrel, but it's a good day to be a fly." Ryon looked openly and with curiosity, respect, and gentleness at something that many adults would either turn away from or look past as unimportant. Instead, he derived lessons of connectedness. These are the lessons of Riverbanks.
Thank you.
Say bye.
Bye. Everyone. Sorry for, sorry for, for not seeing the dead squirrel.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, council members, I don't know how I followed that, but Derek Williams, I reside at 3800 Trenton Road. I've had the pleasure of being the, several years ago, the Society Board President, which I enjoyed very much. I've lived in Richland County a long time, live in the city as well. I won't reiterate everything, but you know, the zoo is the number-one ticketed or gated event in our entire state. That means of all the different regions we have, whether it's in Greenville or in Charleston, even Myrtle Beach, we have the number-one ticketed event throughout our entire state. I think that means a lot. What I've heard growing up and as I've traveled the state and other boards is that, well, Columbia's not like Charleston, it's not like Greenville for certain things. No offense to the Greenville Zoo, it's not Riverbanks. No offense to Charleston, where I went to college at, they don't have Riverbank Zoo there. I've had the fortune of seeing the National Zoo. I've been to Central Park Zoo, some other zoos. I've been to San Diego, which is phenomenal. The only thing that San Diego used to have that we didn't have is they had pandas, but the pandas have gone home now. So, we have one of, I think, the best attractions, and I would hope that we seriously consider funding this. I think you see the support of several of our residences, and I was trying to think the past couple of weeks of one thing, one entity, one event that unites Lexington County and Richland County and our city. It is the Riverbank Zoo. So, please give it your highest consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Salter, Tommy Stringfellow.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jane Salter, and I live on 1005 Natchez Street in West Columbia. My family and I have been visiting Riverbank Zoo since I was a toddler. I fell in love with the zoo with our annual membership that we have had for my entire life. I have spun on the carousel, saw the elephants, who aren't there anymore sadly, fed the parakeets, ate popcorn, and watched the fish in the aquarium. I have so many pictures of me and my siblings all over the zoo like it was our backyard playground. It has been a stepping stone in my growth and independence. When I was in seventh grade, I became a member of their program Zoo Crew, which is a program for middle schoolers that has tons of hands-on activities, such as creating enrichment, animal encounters, and backstage tours. The Q&amp;A sessions with the zookeepers are one of my favorite things. During my time there, something sparked in me brighter than it had before. I've always been interested in animals and life science, but after joining these enrichment programs, I started exploring all there was to being a zookeeper and working with animals. I'm now in the high school volunteer program Zoo Teens, which is even more in-depth and has instilled my love of biology, wildlife interest, and all things nature. I am fortunate enough to live with this zoo and gardens in my neighborhood backyard. It has allowed me to know more about the zoo and its programs. I've been able to attend many events held by the zoo, and this has also enabled me to participate in Zoo Crew and then later Zoo Teens. These programs have helped shape my vision of the future to include working with animals. Without Riverbanks, I would not be the person I am today. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, council and staff. My name is Tommy Stringfellow. I reside at 705 Maple Street, Columbia, South Carolina. I am the president and CEO of Riverbank Zoo and Garden, and first of all, I want to thank all the supporters that came out tonight. It's not surprising to see the crowd and the phone calls that I've gotten. Thank you so much, and mean so much to us, to our commission, and also to the staff that's here tonight. To all council members, I'm here to say thank you and express my appreciation to each one of you that have spent the time, taken a lot of your time, out of your hours, to meet with us over the last two years to discuss this bond request. Every one of you have been going, have been open to discussing all ideas, all options. You provided a lot of guidance. You've sent me back to have more discussions with our commission, our society board, our staff. You continue to challenge, and you continue asking questions to make sure that the investment of our taxpayers will find a rate of return that is unlike anything else. I'd like to speak for you on behalf of all Richland residents that reside here. You should be proud how each one of your council members have represented your district. I, as a resident, and the CEO, can tell you, I was grilled, I was asked lots of questions, and I continue getting asked questions about the right things and what this means to the community. Thank you for the service and what you do for Richland County. For almost 50 years, the collaboration of both counties and the private sector have been a model success not found anywhere. It's the reason your zoo and garden is a point of pride and that all of us brag about wherever we go. Many times, if you've been out and somebody asks where you're from, and you say the Columbia region, they no doubtily ask, "Oh, that's one of the best zoos you guys are lucky to have." So, let's keep the momentum going. Let's give more reasons for our residents and for our visitors to come back and spend time in the best place in South Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is George Bailey.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is George Bailey. I'm the president of the Darnold W. and Susan F. Boyd Foundation, and I'm here to speak on behalf of this proposal to fund the Bridge to the Wild. As you may know, we recently completed working with the zoo to complete the restoration and renovation of the Aquarium and Reptile Center. When we began that project, we met with the architects, the zoo architects, not Richland, not Riverbank Zoo, but big zoo people. And the project was designed to, or described as a return to glory. And so, what does return to glory mean? And so, well, you know, the facility's aging. We want to restore the tanks that are leaking and repair this and repair that. And I said, "Well, so, we're going to go back to what we had to begin with?" "Yeah, yeah." And I said, "Well, you know, what if, can't we do more than that? Doesn't our community deserve more than that?" And so, they said, "Well, yeah, it'll cost twice as much." So, I went back to our board and said, "Do we want to just go with old plain vanilla or do we really want to put some chocolate on top?" And our board said, "Yes, we want the chocolate on the top." The architects described it as the wicked cool version. I think what we have here before us today with the Bridge to the Wild is another wicked cool version. This will truly distinguish our community. It'll be a feather in our cap. I am so tired of hearing about how wonderful Charleston and Greenville are. We need to do things to distinguish our community, and I think this is a golden opportunity, and I hope you will support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak this evening.
All right, that public hearing is closed. The next item on the agenda is Item 12B, authorizing the expansion of the boundaries of the I-77 corridor, Regional Industrial Park jointly developed with Fairfield County, to include certain property located in Richland County, the execution and delivery of a public infrastructure credit agreement to provide for public infrastructure credits for OREA Columbia, 22% credit agreement to provide for public infrastructure credits for O'Rey Columbia, 22% acres, property owner LLC, a company previously identified as Project O'Rey, and other related matters. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair.
That public hearing is now closed. Next item on the agenda is item 13, approval of consent items. Ms. Newton?
Not ready, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
You recognize Madam Vice Chair?
I'm ready now. Go ahead, Ms. Mack, I'll second.
Okay. Motion to approve items 13A through F.
Second.
Properly second. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
No.
Yes. Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Items 13C, E, and F need to be reconsidered. Mr. Brown?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Entertained a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry. You recognize Ms. McBride?
Item C? Item, did you say C?
Right, these items up for reconsideration now, Ms. McBride. Items C, E, and F.
Okay.
They're up for reconsideration.
I have clarification for item E.
Okay, I can ask?
Thank you. The Community Plan and Development Conservation Division Columbia Rowing Club Operating Agreement, I just wanted to make sure that, that we were ethically correct in funding this particular project. It's for a members-only club, and I wanted to ensure that this is something that the county can do.
Mr. Brown, or perhaps Ms. McLean?
Just want to take a moment. So, this was actually an operating agreement with the rowing club. It was a previous agreement that the county had. The rowing club came back, asked for some additional kind of changes, but this is actually just the same agreement that we previously had. So, no changes to the pre-existing agreement. This is basically just saying that, yes, we're going to continue with the previous agreement that we had related to them being able to operate and use the area out there in the, in the county's property.
My concern is also with the previous agreement we had. I think there's a maintenance fee of $6,000, which is not a lot of money, but it's for members only. And so, I'm concerned that the fee is for, and the club is a private club for members only, so that does not include other Richland County citizens, and that we are paying a operation, a maintenance fee for it. So, I don't know whether, that's, that's my legal issue.
So.
All right, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. ACA Jensen can clarify the details related to the property and the maintenance fee if you will recognize ACA Jensen.
I recognize him, Mr. Livingston had his hand raised.
I'll, I'll, I'll answer you. Say what I was going to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing me, Assistant County Administrator Eric Jensen. The fee for maintenance is not for the section of property where the rowing club is operating. The property is multiple acres in size, and the rowing club has a very small portion of it, and they maintain all aspects of it and keep insurance on the small section that they operate on. The maintenance part is for the area that is not occupied by the rowing club, and that is utilized by the citizens of Richland County.
So, not really, because if the maintenance, so why do we have it as a part of this if the maintenance is not a part? That should be separate. We have it here as a part, and that the members, that the members have keys or whatever, cards, and they only have cards to enter that area. So, I'm confused in terms of why it's not separated if this is not part of it.
You recognize, Mr. Jensen?
Thank you again, ACA Jensen, for the record. Again, this is a, I want to say it's a 15 or 20 acre parcel, and the rowing club operates on one acre of it. The area is gated with a key where the area that the rowing club operates and for liability reasons, and they keep their own insurance and they maintain it, they cut the grass and so forth, they do everything on it. The balance of it, the 19 or change acres, however, is left, is a parking lot, an open area where folks go and park their cars and fish off the banks and so forth. And so, there is no exchange of funds here. The county does not expend funds for the maintenance of the one acre area where the rowing club is, and the rowing club maintains that all on their own expense. And the other 19 or so acres, that fee covers the area to empty the trash cans, to monitor it, to go and periodically grade the parking lot and so forth.
Right, does that provide sufficient clarity?
No, that does not provide clarity based on what's in the report of the maintenance fee and cost and how it's used, and who's able to enter and not enter.
Additional discussion? All right, Madam Clerk? And this was a vote for reconsideration, so continue on with the vote.
Brenham?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
No.
Tereshia?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Brown, I would ask that if you could have ACA Jensen provide Ms. McBride any additional information offline regarding her inquiry. Ms. McBride, would that be sufficient?
Yes, it's not that I oppose.
Understand.
The rowing club, but I am opposing it if it's not within the rights of, if it's not legal and if it's not ethical, I have concerns.
Absolutely, yes ma'am. Noted, Ms. McBride. Next item on the agenda is item 14, third reading items. Item 14A, authorizing the expansion of the boundaries of the I-77 Corridor Regional Industrial Park jointly developed with Fairfield County to include certain property located in Richland County, the execution and delivery of a public infrastructure credit agreement to provide for public infrastructure credits to O'Rey Columbia, 22% acres property owner LLC, a company previously identified as Project O'Rey, and other related matters. I entertain a motion. So moved, Mr. Chair?
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
I'm recusing myself due to my parent company representing the applicant.
Noted. English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
It is a third reading item that is appropriate to be reconsidered, Mr. Chair.
Move to reconsider?
Second.
Properly second. Any discussion? None, Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Tereshia?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, next item on the agenda is item 15, second reading items. 15A, finding that the Richland Lexington Riverbanks Parks District may issue not exceeding $80 million principal amount general obligation bonds to authorize the Richland Lexington Riverbanks Parks District to issue such bonds and to provide for the publication of notice of the said finding and authorization. Entertained a motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
You recognize Ms. Baron?
Thank you. And so, to everyone who's come tonight in support of the zoo, I've said many times that the zoo really kept us alive during COVID, and my children still are big fans of the zoo. Like many, I'm not a fan of raising taxes at all, and I've stood by that while now being seated on council. Every budget cycle, I voted against raising taxes. And as Mr. Malinowski stated earlier, yeah, we did vote against this last time, but I think that we're in a different place in our economic development hustle and bustle of things. And as we look at the present day times of how things are moving forward in Richland County, this goes hand in hand with many other deals and many other projects that Richland County had, and this council has voted on over the, the past several months even. And so, I would just, as we, as we move forward, there's, I think there's some things that we should just really be mindful of, and that is that the zoo is a special purpose district, which means that their hands are pretty much tied as to how they can secure funding. And so, with that, this is the way to do that. And, you know, no different from a school district or some of the other agencies that we represent. And so, I've had many conversations with Mr. Stringfellow and his staff, and I would like to just officially go on record and say that I've asked them, as I did at last time we voted, that we need to, as county residents, we should see an invest, you know, what are we getting for our investment? And so, with that, I've made several recommendations, one of which is a buy one, get one. You know, when you go to the zoo, if I take my family of three, then for every ticket that I buy, I should be able to get one free. And when we look at the exchange of the dollar, we've talked about $8, we've talked about $6, $16. It costs $25 to go to the zoo. If we go to the zoo and you have a family of four, looking at the exchange, and I understand that there are families that will go to the zoo, and this is a major sacrifice. So, as it is a major sacrifice for them to go to the zoo, this does give them the reprieve to be able to enjoy something that many of us, you know, may take for granted by going regularly. Secondly, I would like to also say that I've made a recommendation that how school districts are able to go to the zoo for free. There are many nonprofit organizations. I'm an, I own an education company, and I take my students to the zoo in the summertime, but that is at a cost. I'd like to see that that year-round field trip opportunity be expanded, literally year-round for summer camps, for churches, for other education agencies, because I think when people see that this is an investment that they're getting a return on, then it, it does, it does somewhat soften the blow a little bit. But, you know, I make no mistake, you know, I don't want to, to go on to say that I'm like jumping up and down about raising taxes. I'm, I'm not, but we are in a different economic time, whether it's, you know, when we look at our budget cycle coming up, when we start looking at our budget hearings, that, you know, I'm taking a, a deep breath and noting that there'll be other village agencies that will come and would want, and going to need an increase as well, and we have to be prepared for that. And so, with that, I'm standing in support of the zoo, and I will be voting, continue to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baron.
Baron made many of the points that I was going to make, so I will defer.
You know, discussion? You recognize Mr. Livingston?
Let me just thought about saying, at least in my opinion, what an outstanding opportunity for our community. When I approach most major decisions as a county council member, I try to lean toward our vision and our mission statement. And as a council member, one of my primary roles is to, is to be a visionary. And what I mean by that is make decisions that has some foresight as well as decisions that have some imagination. So, when I look at the zoo expansion project, I don't, I don't just see a project, you know, I, I see a vision. I see some foresight there. I see an opportunity for a national destination site. I see an opportunity for us to have a significant, significant complement of our river. I see an opportunity for us to be identified and recognized throughout the nation. You know, for example, when someone says Charleston, you know, I could be in New York, they say, oh, yeah, that historic museum, oh, yeah, what about that aquarium? I want folks to see all over this country, what about that zoo in South Carolina? That's, that's what I see this as, more so than just simply a project that we're talking about. And that's what's really, really, really important to me. You know, I know folks talk about, you know, I care about taxes too, but, but I'm sorry, I do not see this as a tax increase, I see this as an investment. And what I mean by that, you know, I'm talking about, this is an asset that's going, that's, that's, that's going to increase in value over time. We all benefit from that. So, I can't, you know, I just have to say that, that over the time, one of the things I've looked for in this particular county is a destination site, and we, we had all kinds of attempts at it. We tried some kind, we wanted a world type, I think it was, some type of water pool or something of that nature. We talked, we talked about doing a destination sports facility. Well, here's an opportunity for us to, to work with something that we already have to make it the greatest thing that can be in the nation. And, and so, so I can't tell you how important this is to me as a council member, looking at it from this kind of perspective. And I have a lot more to say, but I'm going to stop here. I've had many incidents like this in as a county council member over the years. I can quickly remember as a young county council member, it's almost 25 years ago, there was an argument about whether or not we'll move the museum, the Columbia Museum downtown. And we went for months and months over that, and my contention was that this is no, this is, this is, this is not a project. This is a vision to vandalize Main Street, and that's what happened. And I go on and on about so many incidents and situations over time. So, let's look at this as an investment for our community. It's going to generate more revenue than, than, and, 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 than taxes we're going to pay. Mr. Chair, I plan to say a lot more, but I'm going to stop there.
You have more to say? Speak now, if you ever hold your peace. Any additional? I saw you, Ms. Newton, so go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm good. I was just noting the forever.
At least on this item tonight. Any additional comments? Well, I'm just going to say that I am in the minority on this council with respect to this item, and it's not because I don't support the zoo. And I guess what has sort of bothered me a little bit with the discussion and a little bit of the narrative is that if you don't support the zoo's expansion plans, then somehow you are now anti-zoo. And I will remind everyone that when this came before us over a year ago, I voted yes. I voted in the affirmative. And at that time, when I cast my vote in the affirmative, as, when I was a yes vote, things were a little different. At that time, Richland County Council was not pondering the passage of a penny. And I think what has gotten lost in this conversation is that when our friends at the zoo went to Lexington County a year ago, Lexington County asked you all to, to wait because they were taking up a transportation penny at that time. So, even they understood the significance of trying to pass a transportation penny and trying to pass a property tax hike with respect to the zoo's bond request. Now, the shoe is on the other foot this year. This time, Richland County Council, at some point in 2024, will most likely ask the residents to take up a transportation penny or at least continue the current penny, and we're being asked to honor the zoo's bond request and raise property taxes. And if it was okay for Lexington County at that time to ask the zoo to wait, I don't see why Richland County Council can't receive the same deference. I also want to go on record and say that I do not have an ideological dent when it comes to taxes. I fervently believe that taxes is the cost or the price you pay for living in a democracy. So, I'm not an anti-tax guy, but I also understand that if you're going to raise property taxes on residents, for many of us in this room, it's an investment. But what's an investment for me and others is an expense for someone else. And I have to reconcile, you know, those competing interests. That's my duty, that's my obligation as an elected official. And for me, if I'm going to raise property taxes on residents, it's, it's a two-pronged test. Number one, it has to be a necessity, and number two, we have to exhaust all other alternatives. While the zoo's request is important, I don't view it as a necessity, and I don't believe we've exhausted. And I don't believe we've exhausted all of, all alternatives with respect to a funding mechanism. So I hope that many of my colleagues, as well as my friends over at the zoo, can understand and respect my position. And I'll just close by cautioning some of my colleagues with overpromising with respect to what this item would deliver to residents, or the return on investment. Just as when I'm in the majority and I cast a vote and I say to some of my friends in, in the minority, don't delegitimize the vote because the vote doesn't go in your favor. Well, I would say to my friends in, in the majority, dude, I would warn you against overselling or overpromising the benefits, you know, of the zoo's expansion plans. If you support regionalism, which I do, just say you support regionalism, just say you support this item. But in terms of the return, well, when you look at the zoo's location, yes, the majority of it is in Richland County, and the share of it is in Lexington County, but most of it is in the city, city of Columbia and city of West Columbia. So when these revenues come in, hospitality tax, that's going to the city of Columbia. If it's on the Lexington County side of the ledger, that's going to the city of West Columbia. And I get it, we have all these tourists that we say are coming in to visit the zoo, but I don't have any sort of quantifiable number that says how many folks are actually staying in hotels, staying overnight, and how many of those folks are actually staying in the unincorporated parts of Richland County, which would replenish our accommodation tax coffers, or our hospitality tax coffers, or what have you. So I'm in the minority on this, and I would just ask that my friends at the zoo, as well as my colleagues on council, I'll respect my position. Thank you. Anything else?
Ms. Chair, I changed my mind.
Yeah? You recognize Mr. Livingston?
I, I wanna, I wanna talk just a little bit about the investment. And, and, and no, you know, there, there's no little silver lining of a, a guarantee, but, but, but that doesn't mean you shouldn't have any, any foresight and imagination, okay? Now, we made clear a lot, I said it the last time, that I was looking at the appraised value of the average home in Richland County, and we said that was like about, that this would cost you about thirty, thirty-five cents a week, but that did not include automobile bills, which would cost you a small amount too. But, but I look at that and then I look at what I can get for it. You know, for example, you have on your tax bill a local ops and sales tax credit. That's a penny that, 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 that's paid, most, most of that penny is paid by folks who visit your community, not you. You pay for it, but most, most of it comes from those individuals. And I want you to look on your tax bills when you go home and look at how much that amount is that's been reduced, reduced from your, your tax bill. I'll submit to you that that's gonna increase. Your hate, your hospitality tax, accommodation tax, I'll submit to you that that will increase. You know, I'll, I'll bet someone on that one. You got a tourism development fee, I'll submit to you that that will increase as a result of this, this particular decision. You know, we have a transportation penny that was mentioned. I will submit to you that you'll see a tremendous increase in the amount that you generate from that transportation penny as a result of this. You'll see a lot of new jobs, you'll see a lot of new businesses, you'll see a lot of new shopping. You're gonna see some of that from this. And how I know? For the past thirty or so years, thirty years on this county council, I've seen it happen on certain issues that we voted on and, and had some vision to move forward. And so, so I'm convinced, based on my experiences as a council member over, over a period of time, that this is gonna be the best instance of, of our community, and, and I don't think it's a red herring, I, I'm, I'm convinced, again, based on what happened in the past, that we will significantly benefit from this, even from a revenue perspective.
Thank you, Ms. Livingston. Any additional comments?
Hey.
Is Mackey, then Ms. Newton?
Thank you. I just always like to make sure we're saying factual, there's opinion, there's facts. And I just want to be clear for the record, this council has not approved a new transportation penny. That has not happened. And the penny, transportation penny, or additional funding for the zoo, or additional funding for anything else are two separate issues, and I, I really would like to keep those separate as to not confuse residents when we're talking about them, because council has not approved a new transportation penny. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Before I get to Ms. Newton, if I may just respond to or add to Ms. Mackey's clarification, she is correct. We have not voted on a new penny. However, what this council has done is we did vote on a resolution authorizing a private company to assess the county's transportation and transit needs. That is a precursor, more likely than not, that is a precursor to the county at some point, asking the residents of this county to consider a penny. So Ms. Mackey is correct, we have not officially asked anyone to put a new penny on the ballot, but I also think it'd be disingenuous for me to say to the public that that is not something that council is not contemplating and will not pursue at some point. Ms. Newton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and my comment would, ran parallel to what Ms. Mackey said, though slightly different. And so first, as one of the people who voted against the zoo bond referendum last time, because I didn't think that it was the right time, I want to just acknowledge before everyone how very supportive and respectful you were at that time when we were on opposite sides of the issue, and I fully support your, your right to differ in your opinion about this bond, and it's one of the best parts of council that we sit here and we share priorities, and we all love Richland County, and sometimes we disagree. And so I hope you count me in the respectful of your opinion category.
I'll think about it.
Yeah, that's up to you, that you get to decide that. The only thing that I wanted to, to say, because we do have differing opinions sometimes as council members, is as Councilwoman Mackey said, that I do think it's important to separate the penny from the zoo for many reasons that Ms. Mackey has already enumerated, but also two important ones that she knows but didn't say, probably because she wanted our agenda to keep going. One of those points is the fact that, at the end of the day, Richland County Council will never decide that we have a penny tax. And the reason that Richland County Council will never decide that is because it is always up to the voters. Richland County can decide to put it on the ballot all day long, but it's the conscience of every voter and every citizen to show up at that ballot box and vote and decide if a penny tax is something that they want to do. As I'm frequently telling some constituents, there are powers that, that we have and there are powers that we don't have, and a penny tax always rests in the hands of our constituents. And just the second thing, you know, certainly Lexington County can make or made whatever decisions they made, in the case of the Richland County penny, what I hope that the voters would consider, however they feel about the penny, if it were to be on the ballot, is the fact that it would be a continuation of a penny that they're already paying, it's not some new thing that would be affecting their pocketbooks. And I don't say that to argue with you or to, I don't, I really, I just, I really don't wanna argue, I just wanna say those points about the penny, and I think that your concerns about how they relate together are, are valid because they're your concerns. I just happen to be on the other side of that issue and would hope that we all can keep that separate as we move forward.
Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Newton. And you're right, we, we do, I definitely respect every, all my colleagues' feelings on this issue. Just to even add further clarity to that, yes, council did pass a resolution to identify and look at our current transportation status. Even once that report is done, it still comes back, the body talks about it again, we still have to have another vote to even say if we're gonna move forward with a list of projects to share with the community for it to even go on the ballot. And so there are still many more steps that need to happen that, yes, we are considering it, because that is a responsible thing to do as our county grows, but there are many more steps that we will continue to inform the public on before that comes before you on a ballot. And so I wanna also make sure that it's not perceived as if, one, the things, the two things are connected, or two, that we're moving forward with something that's about to happen that has not been communicated to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Any additional comments?
Uh, for a question.
All right, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
No.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is Item 16, Report of Development and Services Committee that would be given by the Honorable Shaquise Newton. Ms. Newton, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You have in your agenda packet a proposed update to an ordinance that used to be beautifully named the Rank Weeds and Vegetation Ordinance, that our staff has suggested be named the slightly lovelier Unsafe and Noxious Vegetation Ordinance. But essentially, what you have before you is the ordinance that allows the county and our code inspectors to go in and ask for remedies to properties that are not mowing their lawns and are violating other codes as it relates to vegetation, in other words, to help keep our neighborhoods and communities clean. I don't know if there's any staff that wants to speak to this, but I will just say that part of the revising of this ordinance was really with an idea of how we could keep our communities beautiful and reduce blight, but also that they worked in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department to look at how we could enforce the ordinance.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any questions or discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Recognize Ms. Newton.
I just wanna say thank you to the staff for working on this. This was one of those motions that I, was made quite some time ago, and I appreciate it finally coming to fruition. There are a lot of constituents who, no matter what we call it, wanna make sure that their neighborhoods are beautiful.
Next item on the agenda is Item 17, Report of the Administration and Finance Committee that would be given by the Honorable Jessica Mackey. Madam Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Administration and Finance Committee brings before you a recent item that was on our agenda, the Grants and Community Outreach Fiscal Year 2324, CDBG Public Service Projects and Public Facilities Infrastructure Projects. The committee recommended approval of the items presented during that meeting for projects moving forward. Since the committee's meeting, we did have one of the groups that were selected to be awarded the grants, came back to the county staff and said, hey, at this time, we can no longer feel up to taking on this grant and would like to decline. And so staff moved forward with the next applicant, and so what you see in your packet is not necessarily what completely the committee voted on, but it is not because of anything due to the committee, it was just changes from the organization. So committee does recommend approval. However, Administrator Brown, if there is staff available that wants to speak to any of this to make sure that I accurately stated all the facts, I greatly appreciate it.
I'm trying to see if they would like to provide clarification.
Or if they think I did a good job, that's fine.
I think you did a good job with Director Harris. Do you feel like there's a need to provide any assistance?
Excuse me, I am so sorry, but yes, thank you so much, that is accurate depiction, and if you have any other questions in there, I'm happy to answer those.
Mr. Chair, that concludes the committee's report. Do I need to?
Is there a vote needed?
Yes.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any questions, comments? You recognize Ms. Barron?
Yes, I just wanna make a comment. I did attend that meeting virtually, and I would just like to say that the presentation of information given by the staff was very thorough, thoughtful, they were very knowledgeable, and I just want to, you know, go on the record to say it was really good and easy to follow the information that was presented, which made it even easier to support this recommendation. So thank you to you and your team.
Thank you so much. They, they keep me busy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to quickly thank the staff and thank the committee for all their hard work, and just note the wonderful things that these CDBG funds do in our community on page 156 of our agenda. One of those things is funding the Recreation Commission to rehabilitate the pool at Hopkins Park, which has been a real source of consternation in a community that needs more recreation and needs more aquatics opportunity, and this is really an example of the tax dollars at work, and so I just wanna say thank you.
Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Brenham?
Yes, again.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Brown, does this item need to be reconsidered?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Entain a motion.
Move to reconsider.
Properly seconded, either. Done, Madam Clerk.
Brenham?
No.
Q?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Barron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Next item on the agenda is Item 18, Report of the Economic Development Committee that would be given by the Honorable Paul Livingston. Mr. Livingston, you're recognized, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Item 18, A, a resolution clarifying the boundaries of the Pineby Industrial Park and other matters related thereof, the committee's recommendation was to approve them.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any questions or discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk.
Brenham?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Livingston.
Item 18, B, authorizing expansion and boundaries of the I-77 corridor, regional industrial park jointly developed with Fefia County to include certain property located in Richland County, the execution of a liberty of a public infrastructure credit agreement to provide for public infrastructure credits to Earlwood Park Rental Properties, LOC, and other related matters thereof, the committee's recommendation was to move forward for first reading.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any questions, discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk.
Brenham?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Chair, that completes the Report of the Economic Development Committee.
Next item on the agenda is Item 19, Report of the Employment Evaluation and Oversight Ad Hoc Committee that would be given by the Honorable Shaquise Newton. Ms. Newton, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Items 19A and B will be taken up in executive session, and so we can address them afterwards, but whenever you move on to Item 20, I have a motion for you.
How about Item 19.5? Item 20. Jesus Christ, come on, catch on, catch on, catch on. Item 20, Ms. Newton, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, move to approve Items 20A through 20G.
Second.
Properly seconded. Done, Madam Clerk.
Brenham?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Move to reconsider.
Second. Properly seconded. Done, Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Q?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Item on the agenda is Item 1, Executive Session, which takes us back to Items 6A, C, and D on the agenda. Their motion going to executive session with respect to Items 6A, C, and D.
Oh, moved.
Second. It's been moved to properly seconded. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
In executive session. Second? Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Rec. reflect that we went into executive session with respect to Items 6A. Almanac Glenn Attention Center update that was pursuant to South Carolina Code Section We also went into executive session with respect to Items 6C and D pursuant to South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A1, and no action was taken. Information was received only. Takes us back to Item 19 on the agenda, which is a report of the Employee Evaluation and Oversight Ad Hoc Committee, which will be given by the Honorable Shaquise Newton. Ms. Newton, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned, we received information that was of a confidential personnel and HR matter that was covered by executive session. No actions were taken. However, now I do move that we accept the evaluation process recommendations as discussed in executive session.
Second. Properly seconded. Any discussion? What are you, I'm sorry, you've heard the recommendation of the committee, so any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
That concludes my report.
That takes us to Item 22 on the agenda. Motion period. There are no motions. Next item is 23 adjourned.
Move to adjourn.
Entertainer motion. Moved to properly seconded, non-debatable. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brenham?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
They are adjourned.